Our.
Approval of mint, uh, we all from six.
Who's got my.
Hearing today is a public hearing. Done property located at fifty-five thirty-five Linwood Steiner Road and fifty-five seventy-five U.S. Highway ninety west, east side of Linwood Steiner Road, U.S. Highway ninety west, one hundred feet north of Coolman Road, two hundred feet east of U.S. Highway ninety west from B three and B five, B three, District four.
Yeah, they're trying to put a truck stop in. This thing went all the way through the planning commission without a peep. I mean, not a phone call, not an email, not anything. And it's now that our friend, Mr. Lathan, Jerry Lathan, is has realized that something going in across, somebody told him, I think his attorney, that there was something going in across from his memory care unit that I think the mayor, maybe some of you other guys had visited in Theodore. And now all of a sudden, he's interested the day before. So I told him by rule, we would hold it up for a week. But talking to Ms. Pappas, you know, that's, the facts are what they are, and it's gone through the process. Best may be able to give us a little more insight, but the fact is, it's going to be a truck stop in a largely industrial area. It's about about seven eighths of the property is B five. The other part is B three, so they're trying to eliminate the split zoning. And in B five under the new UDC, I cannot find it in the current UDC, but on the one that's being proposed here in a little while, it absolutely by right allows for a truck stop. And these guys have gone through all they need to go through. I see no reason to delay it. I just hope, I've told Mr. Lathan, I hope he will get in touch with them very quickly and work out any agreements that they may want to work out between the two of them. Thank you.
I could add that a lot of us will notice that trucks are parking in vacant shopping center parking lots throughout the city, so there is a real need to have a place that's zoned appropriately and gets them out of neighborhood shopping centers. So that's one of the reasons it was well received, actually.
Yeah, I got three trucks, I got three trucks in Cypress Shores. So I agree.
Yeah, it's a real need, and especially since we went into the industry of distributing. And so there are many people who own their truck themselves but are working with those agencies in order to move products. And so there's no place, they obviously can't park them in their neighborhoods, but they were getting them into those shopping centers, which also looked and gave a very bad impression to people who might look at property in the area. So that that's one of the reasons there is such a need for it.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Public hearing to consider the vacation of a five-foot strip of land adjacent to lot four B, Walker's Addition to Broadwood, District seven.
Um, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a, just a five-foot strip of property on Graywood in the Graywood area, and it is really part of the area for the future thoroughfare for Three Mile Creek on the Parkway. But in talking to Chris Arledge, there are just some issues with the agreements here. We need a little bit of tweaking and a couple of signatures, since today is the first read and it is a public hearing, you know, we'll do the public hearing, but we'll have a week to make some changes. And I know Chris has already run those through the administration, and hopefully by next week, we'll get everything straight.
Perfect. Sounds good, Ms. Wigg.
Public hearing to consider the revocation of the business license of Deep Water Marketing LLC for houses located at two fifty-nine, two sixty-one, and two sixty-three South Broad Street.
Okay. If people signed up. We have some people already signed up, Madam Clerk? Do we have a number or something?
Um, no.
Just public.
No, we only, just the, just the attorney.
We got a.
And our attorney.
Okay.
Someone from the administration, and then we just got an email. Can't pull it up, but basically, the property owner and his attorney, I don't know if there's been any citizens that have signed up.
Public hearing to declare the structures at four oh eight Swartz Street, nineteen fourteen Nerline Lane, sixteen oh six Katy Street, twenty-seven sixty-five College Street, three fifty-five Regina Avenue, three thirteen Lincoln Boulevard, eighteen fifty-six Clinton Avenue, twenty-five oh five Dubois Street, twenty nineteen Tucker Street, three oh nine Cuba Street, four hundred Lexington Avenue, and thirty-nine oh three Valish Drive, public licenses, and order them demolished.
Is, is David Duckingback home?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Richardson, I'm here.
Okay, David, I took a look at, uh, twatch Nerline, Katy, College, Clinton, Dubois, Tucker, um, and Nerline Lane, um, I didn't see that much other than a creek, but it's a huge tree on the side of the house, and now that the limbs have, limbs have reached the roof, but the structure of the house, as far as I could see, was solid.
And. To follow up, Mr. Richardson, the sites were all inspected by our inspectors, and we have provided the documentation, specifically the blight survey reports, that indicate that that these properties do have damage that meet the criteria for demolition. If if we need to hold them over and have a site visit, we can do that with you, but at this point, it's not only the front of the building that the conditions exhibit, but it's the entire building itself. And there could be some, some things that you're not seeing from a, a drive-by or street view that's towards the rear of the site or the side that does qualify based on our current codes for a demolition status.
I would like for us to hold over Nerline Lane, Katy Street, College Street, and Clinton Street.
Hey, David, if you want to move into District four and tear down a few, I'll, I'll let them go straight through. I got a whole bunch of them.
I'm with John. If we're not going to tear down any in District one, we can please move to five.
And on any District one is almost barren.
Well, let's just stop wasting time and resources in one land, then. Let's move the time and resources to other districts.
Let's, let's just lay it over like I recommended.
Keep on delaying.
Mr. President? Mr. President, Levon?
He gone.
David, are you still on?
I'm, I'm here. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, David, on the Lincoln Boulevard, you and I have talked about this for a long time, but if you wouldn't mind just going over the history of the Lincoln Boulevard structure, what you have tried to do to not get to this point, just to remind everybody in case there are any questions.
Yes, just briefly, we've been working with the property owner for several years, going on about two, two and a half years, and this is a currently vacant, it's burned, a burned structure where the roof has collapsed on the, as you're looking at the building on the left-hand side. And what's happened is the, the property owner expressed an interest for a grant, a repair grant through Neighborhood Development Jamie's Roberts Group. However, they never either qualified or submitted the right paperwork, so we got a little bit delayed on, on processing for demolition, but regretfully, the, the property owner was not able to, to secure a grant, and they have not begun repairs. So we're, we're about two, two and a half years out from the, the structure burning, and with no action, the city's falling back to the demolition tract of, of the building, regretfully, but that's where we are today. It's a vacant burned structure that is still open to the public.
I've spoken with some representatives of the property owner, and we have tried, and I know Jamie's department has tried to work with them to walk them through this, but, you know, it's been years in the making, and it's just gotten to the point now where I don't believe the property owner can do anything. And leaving a burned house with a collapsed roof in this neighborhood where there's already blight around it, I, I just don't think it's a good idea to continue on, and so I support moving forward.
I, so, I, I don't have an issue. We, I'll support what you support. Madam City Clerk?
Um, presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, we have no one for non-agenda items. Essential COVID-nineteen item held over twenty-seven zero-two-four ordinance to regulate food trucks.
We had to delay the Finance Committee meeting on this issue, and I was going to suggest that we, the Finance Committee take it up on Tuesday, October twentieth, and that we, and that we therefore, uh, carry this over for six weeks. Is October twentieth a good day for a two o'clock meeting of the Finance Committee?
Data, October.
One in.
That would be Mr. Williams and Mr. Richardson.
I'm in.
I'm in.
We gonna have a virtual lunch, too?
Yeah, edible virtual lunch.
Hey, can we do noon?
Or third, we trade over to November third.
You want, is it October twentieth or November third, Joe?
We'll, we'll carry the item over to November third.
Oh, as a, as an item on the agenda?
Can we do noon, Joel, instead of two o'clock? Can we just go straight into it?
Sure. Is that okay with you, Fred?
Yeah.
So you would say following the council meeting, because that could be any timeline. It might be done by eleven.
So is, is Dietrich or someone listening to us, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, yeah.
I would like for that to be placed on our agenda.
Calendar.
Calendar.
I'm sorry.
Zero nine six six one approve the twenty twenty twenty-one general fund capital improvement fund and convention center budget.
Yeah, I think we had, we had had several of the council members that had questions about the half a million dollars for Lad Stadium and about the clerical position in the clerk's office. And I, the, the administration, I believe, has agreed to those items, and I don't know if, is Mr. West on?
I am.
Yeah.
And if, if, Mr. West, if you could just identify where the funding for those items would come from.
I'd be happy to. Good morning. These two items would not require an amendment of the budget that is before you now. The half million dollars for Lad would be an allocation from the existing citywide public buildings account. So that would be something that would come before you as a regular allocation for a project. And so at, at that point, then, that would match the county's allocation of five hundred thousand dollars for the same purpose. With respect to the additional employee for the clerk's office, the mayor has agreed that that job would be filled by an allocation of an unfilled position elsewhere in the city, which is not an infrequent need, that is, to, to allocate personnel funds from one department to another, or rather, to put an employee into a department temporarily. Then next year, twenty twenty-two, that position and the funding would be permanent in the clerk's office.
Good. Thank, thank you, Mr. West. Other than those two items, I think we're ready to vote on the budget today.
If, if I could.
Yeah, those two items.
President Mancy.
Uh, Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Um, for the capital budget under the CIP program, I will be making some changes, and so I can do that at the meeting to, from some allocations that are, I'm not adding any funding, it's all, it's funding that's already in place, just changing priorities of spending.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't foresee a problem with that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I, I had made a request through our president to the mayor, Mr. West, regarding allocating funding for St. Stephen Road revitalization project. And I, I never got any, any information back on that. Since we have both of them, the mayor and Mr. West on with us, I would like to hear from them.
Uh, Mr. Mayor or Mr. West?
I'll speak up.
Yes, sir.
According to Mr. Hamburger, we are doing the plans, an overlay plan on St. Stephen Road as we speak, and until we know, until we finish that plan, you know, there's no, we don't know what we're going to do yet. And so when we do know, when it's better defined, then, like every other project, we will seek to find funding for it. But at this point in time, we have not defined the project other than you would like to have it fixed and repaired and have curb and gutter.
Well, that's, that's not true. A quarter of a million dollars has already been allocated to do the surveying, the mapping, to define property lines for us, and from that point on, we can start, go, go and construct it once we, once we know exactly what's ours and what's not ours, we can go, go toward construction. We can't make, we can't go toward nothing without funding. The funding will be there, so I think they're, they're on their family with that potion of it. And none of that money was allocated from the city. We got it from South Side Bank, regional planning commission, gave a grant for us to do that, and we are wrapping that up. So I would like to keep the progress going, and I would like for the city to make a contribution toward us keeping that progress going.
Uh, Mr. Williams? Um, yeah, I don't know if, and I'm not asking for an amendment, I'm just asking for consideration at this point from the mayor and Paul, that we're getting some late news, it was yesterday, that I think, I think it's yesterday, if mine is right, that Deion Sanders was named the head coach of JSU. Yeah, and, and with that, the Gulf Coast Challenge is facing another challenge, and that is an increase in cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I think to have, have Deion primetime in our city with his team would be, would be a big deal, and if there's some way we could figure out how to make that happen, but there's a lot of talk to happen, but I, I simply wanted to, to put it out here early as we're moving things around, just to consider it for a future allocation somewhere, maybe an economic development expenditure that's within the budget.
I would, at this point, this late of the game, John, I'd have to defer to Paul, and maybe it's just one of those things that we're aware of at this point, and then we'll, we'll try to figure out how to address it, you know, if it comes about.
Right, that's all I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, and I just, I want to state for the record that I did have a discussion, a, a long detailed discussion with Mr. Richardson concerning the St. Stevens Road Initiative, and I did take his request to the administration, and subsequently, I took the administration's response back to Mr. Richardson. So I, I, I don't want it to be that, you know, I was asked to do something and I didn't, you know, I dropped the ball somewhere, I carried the ball, I didn't get the response that probably was, that was salt, but I, I gave the response back to Mr. Richardson that the administration presented to me, and I just want to make sure that everybody is, is aware of that.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
And I think that Mr. Richardson's comment about that you don't move forward without the funding, I think that, that's, obviously, we can't do projects without the funding, but until we know what the scope of the, that we're working on it, the scope of the project will be defined, and just like other projects that are needing to be done, we'll put that in the hopper with everything else, and we'll decide, you know, how it should be done. But at this point in time, to move that kind of money to that project is not our preference, but I understand that there's a difference of opinion there.
Well, obviously, if Mr. Hamburger feels that St. Stephen Road is not ready for any funding to be allocated to that project, then I'll move to, I, I recommend we allocate that funding to other trailer gardens park.
There we go.
It is, it is ready.
Make a motion.
It's been neglected.
Make that motion.
And where would the money come from?
The same place, the money for Tremel Park, Mills Park, Matthews Park, Mango Park, and the rest of them come from.
That was out of surplus.
Yeah, that's where I got my new fire station and my new Publix from.
Right.
So just to clear the record, there's been money allocated to several different districts for parks in this budget. We felt those were the priorities a couple of years ago. The money that was left over from capital surplus all went into District one, and so if you're trying to balance how the funds from capital surplus have been spent, I think that what's been done to this point in time is certainly equitable.
I, Mr. President, I would point out, just to put some.
But Dave's been, Mr. Richardson?
Just to put some numbers on what the mayor said, there was a million dollars allocated for the Publix project, two point eight million for the Gus Rim Fire Station. That's three point eight million went into District one the last time this was done, when most of the rest of us got zero. So I, I don't, I, I think, I, and, and three point eight million is more than any of these allocations for these various parks. And as far as Matthews is concerned, Matthews is nothing but a collection of ball fields that are used by kids all over the city and the county, it's not a neighborhood park. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it the way it is.
Make a motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
We have built fire stations all over this city. We built one in John's district, out there in, 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 in Gilbert's Corner, Overlook Road, Apple Boulevard, we built a fire station all over this city. The point is, you go look at the, you go look at the, the budget, and see what was allocated, what, I, I don't see, what, what we have had to do down through the years, we have had to take the CIP funding for any improvements that we had in our district. No, I didn't have no charge in the mail, the mayor closed up Gus Rim. He didn't ask me. He selected a site to build a next fire station. He didn't ask me. He picked a site, and then he decided what he wanted to put into the fire station. As a matter of fact, when I went to him and asked him to put a meeting room in there, he told me no. Now, eventually, a small space was put in there for a meeting room. I'm saying, these were capital projects that the mayor selected and that he funded, wasn't on District one, that this fire station is serving District five, District seven, District one, District two, it's not just serving, it's located there.
Four, four hour, four.
That's right. If you could say that about all the parks that are on the list, they're, they're all big project parks that get people from all over our city to utilize.
No, we only have big project parks, Western Mobile, we don't have no big project park, Eastern Mobile.
That's right. Let's, let's go forward.
Yeah. Any, any further, any further commentary?
Yes, let me say that I'm not opposed to the mayor funding any of these parks. I'm opposed to District one not getting in. I'm not opposed to him doing that. And there's another money left over in the budget for the mayor to include it, District one. Sees me that District one was deliberately left off the list.
Three mile.
I don't believe that that had nothing to do with Fred Richardson, had to do with the thirty thousand citizens living in District one.
Well, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Let, let's move to the next item.
Okay. Zero eight six six, six six three approve purchase order to office equipment company of Mobile East for furniture for convention center, fifty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents. Zero nine six six four reallocate money from the cruise terminal operating account security to public facility improvement capital project for parking deck structural repairs. Twenty-one six six five authorized contract with Steve Thornton for sidewalks along Oshel Road between University Boulevard and Parkway Drive West. Twenty-three six 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 acceptee for the donation of land along Three Mile Creek and Gordon Smith Center Drive for the Three Mile Greenway Trail. Essential COVID item being introduced for the first time, fifty-seven zero-two-nine ordinance to establish procedures and policies for the vacation of any street alley or dedicated public right of way.
If, if I could speak to this?
Ms. Rich?
I, I think you've, you've gotten a lot of my emails back and forth on this, and the way it's structured right now, it'll be impossible to do a vacation. I understand that was the premise of how the ordinance is basically composed to make it extremely difficult, but when people must do certain things, I think that may be softening the language that says shall do, because if not, every time the council goes through a vacation, not just this council, and we don't do it that often, it's maybe a half a dozen times a year to vacate, you know, a street, I mean, it's probably not even that much, but I don't, I don't see where putting people through gyrations that are impossible to meet based on this ordinance. So I know this is the first read, so we'll have a week until we vote on it, but I urge you to go back and read it line by line, what's required, and maybe change. changing the word, instead of must, say shall, so that the council can have some discretion and not have to waiver things in order to make a vacation work for citizens or a neighborhood or people that abut it. So I know there's state code that we have lived by for years, and this is going above and beyond in asking the applicant to be responsible for traffic studies, impact studies, paying the cost of advertising, paying the cost of any litigation once it's been probated. And the difference between this and a temporary closure is that it is probated, and oftentimes they are challenged. So someone stepping out to do it might be, you know, put in a position where they can't afford it. It normally takes a lawyer, but this would be a lawyer and then some. So we're putting it into a privileged class as opposed to someone who just abuts a closed roadway that the city has no purpose, will never use, could be improved or added to their property. They would have to pay the taxes. Again, I urge you to read it carefully because it's near too impossible to achieve. And the, the council will always be giving the discretion, but I don't think we should have to waiver every aspect in order to achieve it on something that serves a good purpose for, for everybody involved and for councils in the future to also be able to move vacations forward in a manner that serves not the individual just making the application, but our city at large, because it is a city resource that they're asking to take over and to add to their property. So I, I just am very troubled about how it's written because it's just next to impossible to achieve. And, and we've seen some good vacations happen and have helped neighborhoods or helped citizens. And this will no longer be available to citizens. And I think we should keep that door open for the future. Thanks.
Mr. Daines?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to respond to Ms. Rich by first, kind of setting out how we got to where we are today. We, we started out with an ordinance that covered both vacate closures, and then we determined that it was just too complicated to have both those kinds of issues in one ordinance. It's just, it, it's hard to keep it straight. And so we decided to separate it. So we took up vacations in one ordinance and closures in another. Then, when we started looking just at closures, we thought, well, there are really two kinds of closures. There's, there's a closure of a used right-of-way and a closure of an unused right-of-way. And we, we close, we vacate unused rights-of-way a number of times every year. This is, this is a right-of-way that we have that doesn't have a street on top of it. It's just sitting there unused or probably remain unused. And, and we divest ourselves of those from time to time. So what we're left, and, and that's in here. And so we treat those a little bit differently in this ordinance than we do the closures of used rights-of-way, where there's actually a street there. Now, that should be done, that, that should be very difficult because it is an irrevocable step. We, we convey title to the land to someone else. It can never be undone. These streets were in many cases installed by the city, in all cases are maintained by the city. And to permanently divest ourselves of the ability to open that street up again, I think, I think it, it, it has to be very, very difficult to do that. Now, we have still are working on the ordinance having to do with closures. Enclosures can, you know, be temporary, or they can, they can be indeterminate in length. But, but if, if a closure is done and it's indeterminate in length, the city still has the option at some point in the future to come back and open that street up. So I think, I think if we're going to close a used public right-of-way to vehicular traffic, we ought to do it in such a way that we can undo that at some point in the future, instead of irrevocably divesting ourselves of that. So it is, I, I agree with Ms. Rich. It is, it is a, under this ordinance, it is very difficult to vacate a public right-of-way, a u, a public right-of-way. And it should be. It should be difficult.
If I could comment again?
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. And I won't belabor this because we're going to rest it for a week, and I've, I've urged you to read it carefully on what, what will be required of any citizen or group that comes forward for their vacation. I don't disagree. I'm glad we separated. We've learned a lot. We're moving forward to maybe resolve traffic issues because a lot of this has to do with traffic issues. But the idea that there were two recent vacations of streets of rights-of-way, some that were objected to because people knew about it, but they both passed, one passed all the way to the Supreme Court for giving the city directive on, on how you can go about securing neighborhoods and still stopping traffic from moving forward and therefore vacating. But those are smaller neighborhoods. We have large neighborhoods in West Mobile, much more difficult. And the idea, though, that you're, we're writing something and going to then enforce, just a near impossibility is the concern that I have. And again, I'm not saying those standards shouldn't be there. I think it is a nuclear to vacate a street, but the last two that we went through were for neighborhoods to get more secure, and maybe because we didn't have closure, temporary closure on the books. So I'm hopeful that we are moving forward, but at the same time, I'm isolating how we've done vacation for years historically in the city and how this one will map out based on the language. So it doesn't mean that a council in the future can't change it someday. So I get that. But at the same time, I, I just think that some of the musts might change the language to shall, which then you're not waiving every other aspect of it if you do decide to vacate a, a street that it was an active street. Because I see the difference in what you're saying. And a vacation is a lot of hoops and hurdles to go through to begin with by state code. We're just making it extremely difficult in our city for citizens if this is approved. So again, and it's good that we've separated. I appreciate all that. And, and that is helpful for us to still work with citizens to improve quality of life because that's what we're talking about when we're talking about vacations. But thank you. That's it.
Madam City Clerk?
60, 64030, ordinance to rezone property located on the south side of Tennessee Street. Oh, okay. Tennessee Street from R2 to B2, District 3. 64031, rezone property located at 5535 Linwood Steinert Road and 5575 US Highway 90 West from B3 and B5 to B3. 08672, approved purchase order to C Eldrew Doos and Sons Foundry and Machinery Company for manhole covers, $18,736. 08673, approved purchase order to Caligas Photo Supply for eight cameras for the police department, $23,975.60. 08674, approved purchase order to Real Scout.
Madam Clerk, Mr. President, I, I thought someone else would ask, but I'm curious about the eight cameras for $23,975.60.
This is for the police identification and investigators.
Yeah, we know what it's for. Why, why so much?
These are large, these are large expensive digital cameras.
Okay. With the modern cell phones, we couldn't, I mean, have we, are, are they not outdated? I got the iPhone 11. I pretty much can do anything any other big camera can do. Why we need, why, why we need to do this? We can't take the advantage of technology.
That is a question you'd have to ask someone within the police department.
Director Barbara just left to go to another meeting. But these, my understanding, are surveillance cameras. This is part of technology. This is part of us being able to observe the downtown streets, is my understanding. But I'm not 100% sure of that. But we can get you an answer before the regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, we got, it'll hold over a week, so it doesn't need to come before the next meeting. But, but I just, I appreciate that. Thank you.
We'll get it by next week. Thank you.
08674, approved purchase order to Real Scout for film office management software, $31,980. 08675, approved purchase order to Federal Resources Supply Company for one bomb suit for the police department, $36,850. 08676, approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for two 15-passenger vans for the motor pool, $57,384. 08677, approved purchase order to Massimo Americas for warranty protection for 52 rad 57 ox, oximeters, $36,244. 21678, authorized contract with Centus Corporation, number two, for uniform and supplier rental services, various departments, $12,000 per month. 37679, recommended approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine off-premise is only licensed for Moffett Wine on Moffett Road, Suite C. 37680, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine off-premise is only licensed for Moffett Two on Moffett Road, Suite C. 37681, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Rockin' Rose Sushi on South McGregor Avenue. 37682, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail license for Creani Pot on Downtown Boulevard. And 37683, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Brick and Spoon on Airport Boulevard, Suite 120. 4684, 8586, 8789, are declaring destruction of public nuisance and ordering them demolished. I will read out all except the ones that Mr. Richardson asked us to lay over. 60690, determine an appropriation of windmill place subdivision homeowners association serves a public purpose and approved payment, $31,000, $3,100. 37691, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor class two package store license for downtown liquors, beer, and wine on North Broad Street. 08692, authorize a purchase order to CDW Government LLC for 1,750 subscriptions for Microsoft Office 365 and Product Service Agreement, $134,855. Act on that today because the subscription is going to run out on today. Okay, right. The administration is asking that we, that you all vote on this today because the subscriptions are going to run out.
Got it.
Okay. 23693, acceptees for the acquisition of property for the McGregor Avenue widening project, Dolphin Street to Airport Boulevard, $30,200. 31694, authorized grant from Aftermath Services for the MPDK non-unit, $5,000, no match. 31695, authorized grant subaward agreement for the Mobile Greenway Initiative, Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail, no local match. Continuing with declaring properties public nuisances, 469697, 9899, 700, 701, and 47702, assent to the vacation of a five-foot strip of land adjacent.
Lisa, I, I think Fred wanted to pull over 696 Clinton Avenue also.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I have it. I won't read it when I read them out at 10:30.
Okay.
40, 47702, assent to the vacation of a five-foot strip of land adjacent to Lot B, Walker's Addition to Broward, District 7. 60703, determine a contribution to CF Viker High School serves a public purpose and approved payment, $1,000. 21704, authorized contract with Youngblood Barrett Construction and Engineering for Dog River Park Improvement Phase 3, $428,628. 21705, authorized contract with Harris Contracting Service for Joe Bailey Park walking trail lighting and site improvements, $568,164. 21706, authorized contract with Icah Construction Corporation for Langen Park drainage improvements, playground area, $273,800. Call for public hearings. 41707, call for public hearing to rezone property located at the east terminus of Blue Ridge Boulevard extending to the west terminus of Old Dobbin, Old Dobbin Drive, north, the west terminus of Harness Way, the north terminus of Creek Line Drive, and the north terminus of Valleydale Drive from R1, R2, and B1 to R1, scheduled October 13th, District 6. Council, I'd like to say we do have Reggie Hill sign for agenda items regarding the budget and the vacation, the budget and the vacation, the street vacation.
But can we go through these and just make sure we are all on the same page on which ones we're going to take up today, which I have unmarked are 37679, 680, 681, 682, 683, 684, 690, 691, 692, 694, 695, 697, 698, 699, 700, 701, 702, and 703.
Did you say 690? The allocation to, okay, I thought so, but just wanted, thank you. Appreciate that.
Not 702.
Yeah, not 702.
Not 702.
702, okay.
Oh, that's going to rest a week, right?
Yes.
It, it may, I've spoken with the attorney on that. It, it may take a little bit longer to work it out, but it, it should be able to be resolved.
Good.
All right. Madam, Madam City Clerk?
That's it. Announcement.
Any announcements during this pre-council period?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
This may be more for the administration, and they may want to address it during the mayor's comment period. But I know some information was sent out sometime either right before or during Hurricane Sally, but people are asking about the recycling centers, the city's recycling centers. And there is one in my district, and I know that it's closed because the items that we take to the recycling centers are then shipped off to a facility in Pensacola. And that facility in Pensacola was damaged because of the storm. So they don't know, you know, right now how long it will be. But people are asking where can they take their recycling? And Courtney in our office has been checking, and it looks like the county's recycling facilities are open. So I just want to check and make sure that that's the case so that we can let everybody know where they can take their recycling goods in the interim. Also, for the council members, you know, we were talking about short-term rentals. We had a really good committee meeting some time ago. We got a draft from Chris following the meeting, and we sent it to the point of contact for the people who were doing these short-term rentals. people who were doing these short term rentals and um, really haven't heard anything from from anybody. So I want to move forward once we get past uh, maybe some of the budget and other things. So if you do have any comments, if you need Chris to send that back to you, please go ahead and do it. So that, you know, the next couple, three weeks, we can get this thing uh, taken care of. And then the only other thing that's on my list, um, and hopefully the mayor or someone in the administration can address it. Um, I know trees are continuing to fall because the ground is so wet and continues to just get even more saturated. So I I think we need to remind people that this um, can happen and that there are a lot of limbs that uh, maybe just haven't quite fallen from some of these trees or continue to fall. And um, you know, to remind everybody who to call, how to call, and to be safe around um, these tree limbs that could be coming down. So just, you know, to alert folks that it's not over, you know, we're still going to have some damage from these trees.
Absolutely, Councilwoman McGregor, I totally agree with you.
Okay.
Any any other announcements? All right, if not, uh, we will see each other at ten thirty.